No, no, no. I have some place up north.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order a regular city council meeting of the city of Satellite Beach, August 5th, 2015, approximately 7:00 P.M. Please join Vice Mayor Montanaro for a prayer and a pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Please help us to make good decisions for our community. Please continue watching out for our men and women in the armed forces who are stationed around the world, bring them home safe when it's their time. Amen. She will join me in a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation from under doubt and in the midst of the liberty and justice of our world.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving on to Agenda Item Three, and this is citizens' comments for non-agenda item. So at this time, the floor is open for non-agenda items.
Can everyone hear me? Resident Satellite Beach, CRA resident Ron Trigoudis. Prior to this meeting, we had a CRA meeting, a Community Redevelopment Board meeting. And there are limitations on comments. However, the meeting started at 6:00 P.M. I can't tell you the exact time that it ended, but it was way before 6:30 P.M. And I believe citizens should have the ability to comment and discuss things, including with the CRA Board Executive Committee. When there are maybe two or three residents there, especially when it is important to discuss these items on the agenda, it should be opened up a little more. And Robert's Rules do discuss that, but I'm going to stay away from Robert's Rules right now. My problem is, the Women's Club contributed $150,000 to beach activities as far as structural improvements. And then I go back and see the beach caster that says that, oh my God, we've got over a million dollars' worth of reserves. And I think these ladies work very hard to raise the money. And I'm not going to go into the discussions in the past, nor am I going to go into how this was procured. It is up to the citizens to realize this and bring it forward. And if they do not, then I will release something in regards to that. We have raised over a million dollars based on the beach caster and reserves, and yet we are taking this money. And then we end up with a Shell Street project that they contributed to. It's supposed to be one beautiful place. And there's my additional issue in regards to, well, we're going to cut back costs in the CRA. We're not going to take these monies and do certain things. And then I find out that the county for redistribution is getting additional monies back, and so is the city from the CRA. Now, we all know that there are some issues going on here financially. But to take this money from the Women's Club who can contribute medications that they are so striving for, and I can go on and on. I cut it off right now. I am just mesmerized, if not appalled, of what is going on here. I do not understand this, that we can have a million dollars in reserves, and the Women's Club is being fleeced by $150,000. And then I go back to the budget. I can't reconcile certain things, and I am a numberous person, and I will bring it And I end my case here right now. I am leaving this room. I am not going to be gavelled by the mayor like I was at the CRA Board. And go ahead and laugh at me, Mr. Mayor.
I am not, sir.
I am done.
Thank you.
Over.
Courtney, you want to comment on the finances?
He closed comments.
Okay, thank you. The floor is still open?
Do I get a response to somebody in Robert's Rules for that?
You want to respond now or after citizens' comments? Okay, we will respond. The floor is still open. Citizens' comments on non-agenda items.
Do I get to stay or am I gone?
That's your choice, sir.
No.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Listen, I'm stopped for one second. You're more than welcome to be at the meeting and to participate. Your time at the podium is finished. We will respond to you after citizens' comments. Be more than happy to. So if you would like to stay, don't start. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to sit. Thank you, sir.
And will I be able to respond?
No, sir. She will answer the comments. It's not a question and answer.
Then I will not stay because I will not be allowed to respond.
And you're welcome to leave, sir. Sir, you're not here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, people. The public comment portion of this meeting is still open.
Gail Abrams, a CRA resident. $149,000 from the Women's Group. Really? I mean, really? Initially, that project on Shell Street was supposed to cost $400,000. I mean, taking money from the Women's Group when we have a million dollars in reserves? I would like to stay. I would like to have my CRA money back, okay, since I live in a CRA. And some of you remember a county commission meeting that you went to where I was there, and I was very upset about the way this agreement was handled, because that's my tax dollars.
Thank you. Comment portion still open. Here are no further public comment. Citizens' comments, excuse me. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that the community and the audience understands that the Women's Club was not fleeced in any way. We did not go and force the Women's Club to give a donation to the city. The Women's Club gave that donation to the city years ago. It was sitting in the city's restricted reserves, restricted for waterfront, beachfront acquisition. The city has no plans to acquire any more beachfront property. So we met with the Women's Club to determine what they wanted to do with those funds, and they said, we would like to dedicate it to a beachfront project. At the time, Shell Street was being planned out with improvements that were requested by nearby property owners as well as community residents. When we started, you know, basically creating the budget for that project, we realized that the budget from the CRA was too small, and we contacted the Women's Club to determine whether that was a project they wanted to participate in, and they said yes. There is no instance in any way that we ever fleeced the Women's Club. And for somebody to use those terms is not only disingenuous, it's ridiculous. The second thing I want to say is that we have a million dollars in reserves because we're supposed to. That's the financial reason why we have those in reserves. The government officers, Financial Association, the GFPA, basically asks us and requires us to have $1.4 million in reserves at all times. We may go a little bit under that or a little bit over that during the time, but that's the general standard. Zero, which is what we started with, or this council started with, and what I started with, is not allowed. And this is the first year we've ever received an audit that did not have a financial condition comment from our auditor saying that we did not have enough money in reserves. So to actually say that we should, instead of use a donation from a willing group that wants to make our city better, and instead use money for reserves, I mean, I don't really know how to respond to that.
Thank you. Any comments, further comments from council? Here are none. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, citizen council comments. Who would like to start?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. I attended the change of command ceremony yesterday at Patrick. One thing I'd like to say is General Mano had a lot of good things to say about the community, the local community, the Space Coast and all that. She said that, of all the places she's been, this is one of the places that she realizes the community gives an awful lot of support to the military members, and a lot more than most bases and places she's been to. So she had a lot of kind words about the community, talking about Satellite Beach, such what I thought was very nice. I also met with the new incoming, Brigadier General Monteith, that was there. He looks forward to commanding here. He also is a very big person when it comes to things for the military members and making sure they have what they had, and really active in the community. And he also pointed out that he looks forward to working with the other members in the community out there also. So it looks very positive to work with him also in the future. And the other second thing is, this morning, I went on a beach walk that they had. Bob Gaborde was there. Some of the editors and others were out there, and they actually walked from Hightower Beach down to Pelican Beach and went back. There was probably about 30 people that were there, and it's part of a mobilized brevard that he's doing. He's trying to go to different places, get people out and walking and kind of showcase areas. But it was a very nice beach walk this morning. Talked to a few citizens that were out there, walking with us, had some good conversations, enjoyed the beach, and everybody was really happy to be there this morning, so it was good. He also mentioned the beach cleanup, which, as you know, he has taken place with Ethan before, and mentioned such a great project that was, and was very happy the Satellite Beach was taking part in that and supported that also. So it was very good this morning. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any further comments? Here are none. Moving on to Agenda Number Five, City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't forget about the Seventh Annual Ravi Shah Memorial Blood Drive, which is coming up on August 22nd, 2015. It'll be held at the First Wave Financial Building from 8:30 to 4:30. I wanted to remind the residents and council that members of city council as well as staff will be at the Quota League Cities Conference from August 12th through the 14th in Orlando, Florida. I have received a thank you letter regarding Police Officer Don Tribell for his assistance of a resident on July 13th. And I also had received a thank you email regarding Fire Captain Paramedic Jeff Dangler and firefighter paramedic Rhiannon Iverson for a great job responding to a medical call. I've included an email describing the success of our fire prevention program and kind of describing one of those scenarios for your information. I have two action items this evening. I added one. The first one is in your report, and it basically, on August 19th, which is the night of our city council meeting, firefighter paramedics Darren Plecky, I'm sorry, and Joshua Moda will be receiving lifesaving medals, and this will be done at an event called the Baller Awards. That event is unfortunately on council meeting night. Since all of you have expressed the desire to attend that event, we would recommend that you move the city council date to August 20th, so we can all attend that event.
Consensus?
Yes.
Where will the CRA Advisory Board meet?
We will figure that out. I will probably ask them to meet earlier.
Okay.
At this time, because it's an action item, for Action Item One, I'll open it up for public comments. Here are none. Back to council.
We're good. Thank you. The second item is a letter from the mayor that staff is hoping that you would approve, which is to the Economic Development Commission Chair, Debbie Good, describing basically a big thank you for their P4 initiative, which basically resulted in the partnership we have with Patrick Air Force Base in the taking over the soccer field, which is allowing us to do our DeSoto Field Stormwater Project. So with your approval, we'd like to send this letter off to them. They would be presenting this at their September board meeting.
Is consensus okay? Consensus, okay. One thing councilman brought up. Can we make it one page?
Yes, we will do that.
Because this is also an action item, I'll open up for public comment on sending the letter to the Economic Development Commission Chairman, Debbie Good. Here are none. Bring it back to City Manager.
That is all.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Discuss Take Action on Board-Council Engagement Letter.
Bond Council.
Excuse me. Bond Council Engagement Letter with Bryant Miller-Olive, PA.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. On July 15th, 2015, the city council approved sustaining bond council services from Bryant Miller-Olive at a cost of $11,500. The city would be utilizing the services of this firm to provide counsel for the issuance of the Capital Projects Note Series 2015 in the amount of $2.5 million. We have included that engagement letter for your approval, and this would be a letter that would be signed by me. I'm sorry, it said Andy, but we'll change that signature line to include me.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the Bond Council Engagement Letter with Bryant Olive and Miller, PA.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion at this time by council? At this time, I'll open up Agenda Item Six for public comment. The floor is now open. Here are none. Back to council. Further council?
We have a representative from the firm. If you could...
Yes, please, thank you.
I'm just going to introduce myself. I'm Misty Taylor. I'm with Bryant Miller-Olive, and we appreciated the opportunity to provide our qualifications to the city. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Nope. What is the name of your firm? We have Bryant Olive and Miller. Is that backwards?
Bryant Miller-Olive.
I changed my motion accordingly.
Right on the Agenda Item page, on the Agenda Item page is where it's corrected. Any further discussion? Thank you. One more?
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Agott?
Yes.
Mayor Argentina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Discuss Take Action on Results of Request for Proposal for Utility Tax Revenue Note Series 2015.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received multiple responses from various qualified lending institutions to provide the $2.5 million utility tax revenue note. The proceeds from this note will be utilized for road resurfacing, road construction, and construction of stormwater projects. The proposals were reviewed by the city's financial advisor, PFM, and they have reviewed the proposals and recommended TD Bank as the loan provider at a rate of 2.97%. The interest rate is consistent with the '15-'16 budget for principal and interest payments in the capital assets fund budget. The approval by city council will allow PFM and city bond council to begin preparing the loan documents for your approval at your August 20th, 2015, meeting. And Nick Roca with PFM is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Move to approve TD Bank as the loan provider for $2.5 million utility tax revenue note.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. I do. Can this note be paid at any time with no penalty or interest?
Yes, this loan has no pre-penalty penalty at any time.
Okay, thank you.
And that's with the 2.97, I think it was, percent?
Yes, 2.97%, and that's fixed throughout the term of the loan.
Thank you very much. I hear no further comments from council at this time. I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item Seven. The floor is now open. Here are none. Bring back to council. Any further comment on council? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Agott?
Yes.
Mayor Argentina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Staff, thank you for working on this. At this time, I'd like to open up Agenda Item Eight, which is a public hearing, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance Number 1107. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1107, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 30-706, Satellite Beach City Code, establishing an effective date to remove nuisance trees defined therein, providing severability, providing an effective date. It's a second reading of Ordinance Number 1107.
Thank you.
Move to approve 1107 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Further discussion from council? At this time, the floor is open for public comment on this agenda item.
I'm Marion Atkinson. I'm here with my daughter, Gail. In the late 1960s, we built our home on Hamlin Avenue, and I paved Satellite Beach Nursery to provide and plant Melaleuca saplings on the Kale Street side of the property. There, they form a beautiful boundary when viewed from my backyard, especially at sunset. I don't know why they are called noxious, because they haven't been harmful to health or property. The contrary, Melaleuca is known for its limitless therapeutic applications, and they could hardly be invasive in built-up Satellite Beach. These trees are starting to show their age, 50-plus years, with the occasional dead branch falling off. I respectfully request that these beautiful trees be allowed to die a natural death, and I or my heirs will see that their remains are properly disposed of. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Gail Whipple. I'm Marion's daughter. When my dad mentioned his concern about the proposed ordinance, I did a little research that I found very helpful. The city's ordinance states that this is in the best interest of health, safety, and welfare of the city. And I do believe that that is what your intention is, and I thank you for that. I thank you for your concern. From my research, I believe that there may be some misinformation about Melaleuca's effects on the city of Satellite Beach. Melaleuca thrives in wetlands, which we all know, which is, of course, not good for our lovely Everglades, but not the issue with the Satellite Beach ecosystem. Brevard County is actually the northernmost limit for the range of Melaleuca trees in Florida. There are a few exceptions, but the majority of Melaleuca are in Indian River County and south. Another issue is salinity in groundwater, which is known to be a limiting factor in Melaleuca spread. All of this can be evidenced by the fact that in the nearly 50 years, no new growth on my father's Melaleuca trees has occurred. The trees have grown in girth, but not in number. He has had no saplings in that entire almost 50 years, nor have there been any spreads in the neighborhood around. According to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, they prohibit the listed plants from cultivation, introduction, collection, and transport without a permit, none of which is happening on my father's property. Also, the Florida prohibited plant rules state that while trees that have been in place for over a decade are not of immediate concern, what they recommend is voluntary removal. Now, that's at the state level. Voluntary removal. They do not require destruction of the trees of that age. My father benefits from the hedge in several ways. It is a noise abatement from the busy Kale Street. It is a privacy barrier. Aesthetically, it is pleasing, as he spends a good portion of his day in his backyard enjoying this beautiful backdrop, including eating all of his meals on his back porch with his trees in view. I would like to make two requests. The first is actually more of an invitation, that each of you would come to my father's backyard and see from his perspective what it would be like to remove those trees, what it would be like for his quality of life, and what it would be like for the value of his property to have that barrier brought down to ground level, which is what is proposed in your ordinance. Secondly, I would ask that you would include a grandfather clause in the ordinance that would allow for trees of more than a decade to remain to their complete life cycle. If one decade is not conservative enough, then make it two or three. I believe this is a reasonable, sensible, and responsible request, and I have been praying for a generous outcome to this vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open?
I'd like to add a current question.
You may.
You proposed that they remain to their complete life cycle. When is that? How long is that?
Well, I'm not sure that that is a definite thing. I can tell you that these are well over their curve of fertility. They are mature aging trees. They're not spreading, they're not growing new branches. As my father mentioned, branches are starting to dry up, and he removes them ideally. They're not increasing. I can't say what the life cycle is, but I can say they're on a downward curve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The floor is still open for public comment on Agenda Item Eight. Here are no further public comment. Bring it back to council.
You are right as far as the environment that Melaleuca thrive in, and we are on the northern boundaries of that area. I would not be adverse to making some kind of concession. There are not that many Melaleuca trees in the city. The Australian pines and the Brazilian peppers are the trees that have been most disruptive in our community, and I've had some phone calls from different people in the city. Actually, I lived on DeSoto Parkway for a number of years, and there's a resident who lives on DeSoto that has Australian pines. And he even sees the destructive nature of the Australian pines. I'm not adverse to, you know, doing something with Melaleuca's.
Let me ask a question to John and Courtney. I know we've been looking at the city and seeing how many of these are around, and one of the proposals he talked about was to allow the city out of one of its funds to possibly aid the homeowner to help them remove them. Is there a possibility to allow that to still occur if that particular homeowner wants them removed, yet in the case here, that they like it because it's a backdrop, and as long as they're not spread or any new ones planted? I think that's one of the main things. Is that something we could take a closer look at?
Easily. I mean, you can certainly, and it's interesting, because most of the complaints I've received on invasives are the pines, Australian pines, trees. Those are the ones that we get the complaints on. But you could do that, you could have a grandfather period. I'm not sure how we can determine the age of the tree, if that's something you can do, John.
That might be a little difficult. But along those lines, one thing that I have been doing is going out and documenting the three different trees, and, you know, there's always another one popping up that I didn't see the last time I go down that road. Right now, the count is about 45 Melaleuca trees, not counting what we talked about tonight. What I would suggest, if that's the direction you're wanting to go, is that the process now is we notify the property owner that they have one of these trees that will need to be removed, and then provide the information on the resolution. What we can do is at least document that tree of being there, and then it puts them on like a grandfather list, and we obviously like to know that they can't propagate any additional trees, and they can remain for the remainder of their life cycle.
You know, I agree there, but I'd also like if you have homeowners, because we were talking about it, this passed the way it was, have the ability to help them up to X dollars, have the have the tree removed, since we were the one that created the.
Yeah, I do think you have homeowners that would like to get them out of the yard.
So can we, can it kind of be a two-way?
Yes.
Street here, those who does want them removed, so be it. You can't plant any new ones, and for those who want it taken out, we can go to our, one of the things we were thinking of doing to help the homeowner.
So we can kind of delay action on this ordinance tonight until we have to send it back and let you guys work on it?
Yes. And I would recommend, since if we are going to make a Melaleuca removal voluntary for a period of years, then I would maybe include in the reimbursement program some help in getting some of the Brazilian peppers out, because that would, we eliminated that out of the financial reimbursement program, just from finance reasons, because there's too many, but that might be helpful to some homeowners to get those out.
John, how many Australian pines are we seeing? I mean, those are the ones that are going to be the most expensive to get out.
Right.
Brazilian peppers, I mean, John can tell you, I think he was here, yeah, he's in the back, John and Sadie. John can tell you, the Brazilian peppers, you know, there's very few big Brazilian peppers. Most of the ones we're seeing now are littler trees, but the Australian pines that are out there, they're huge. The ones that I was talking about on De Soto, there are three big trees, and there's a bunch of them coming up underneath, but these are branches that are coming out of these trees that are falling on this guy's house. So, I mean, those are the ones that are going to be costly to get out.
There's at least 20 of those in that stand you're talking about on the 100 block.
Yeah, 100 block.
It actually kind of wraps into Berbini over there, and, you know, it takes up about three yards, because it is doing just that, you know, they are propagating. There's a couple of those stands that I've got estimates at around $2,000, about $1,000 a day, two days of work to move them. So, yes, that's probably the lion's share of the cost of removing Australian pines, simply because of the size and volume of them.
I think that we need to postpone action on this, and I think that, you know, we've discussed various elements here, and I think every one of them needs to be looked into thoroughly before we pass something on this. I would like to thank Mr. Atkinson and Ms. Whipple for coming and talking to us and alerting us to the situation, and I think we do need to provide some help to them, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I would like to say, I would like to say one thing, too. I think since we are offering monetary help for that, I think if we are going to notify folks that, hey, this tree is here, and we are offering someone that, it's written in that there's a choice. Obviously, my concern here is I don't want somebody 22 years from now coming back and say, well, you made this agreement, you said you would give me money to take down the tree, that we would be expected to pay for it. So it's kind of like an option. If you want to take it down now, we were offering financial assistance to help take it down now. If you don't take us up on that offer, for a very good reason, then that goes away. The monetary part goes away.
Yeah, we can give it time when it, sure.
I mean, I just look at that as, you know, again, I don't want to wait for someone 22 years to come back and say, remember you told me I had to take this tree down? Well, now I'm ready to take the tree down, and I have the money for it.
The resolution that you'll be getting to here eventually addresses just that, but there is a sunset on this resolution.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, in light of saying we may grandfather some of these, I want to make sure that we keep the sunset on that, even if we grandfather these.
So the way we're going to work it, too, is there can be no more planting of them, correct? That will be well spelled out in it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I'm going to ask the Jim Beadle question. We start going on property and taking out trees and that sort of thing. We, you know, trees fall on roofs, we pull up sewer lines, that sort of thing. What's our liability with this stuff?
We're not taking any trees.
Just providing financial assistance.
Correct. The way the resolution is written, which obviously is going to change, too, but the way it's written now is, is that the initiating act will be John giving them a notice that they have to get the trees out.
Okay.
And advising them that this program exists, and that's how it starts. And they have to contract to have the work done, and then the city would reimburse them from this fund.
Just acknowledge that.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you, Jim.
Everyone good with?
I think Lorraine is right. Let's come back with this at a later date.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, John. Thank you. At this time, moving on to.
And before we move on, excuse me, I would like to assure Mr. Baker and the others who have a concern about moving forward with this, that we're not going to be abandoning this issue. We just want to look at it completely and get it right for everybody.
Thank you, John. Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to agenda item nine, discuss take action on ordinance number 1108. Jim?
Ordinance number 1108, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 30-416 Commercial District Satellite Beach City Code to authorize boat storage as an accessory use with conditions, providing severability, providing effective date to second reading of ordinance number 1108.
Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance 1108 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by councilman Goddard, second by councilman Brimer. Further discussion on? Here are none at this time. Open up agenda item nine for public comment. Here, none, back to council. Any further council? And we're all set here on this from all the parties.
All set as in staff?
Staff and.
Mr. Schneuel, I haven't talked to him yet, but I know he was very anxious to get moving on this, so I'm sure we'll be talking. He said he was going to be here tonight, so we could start.
Hey, Jim, how are you?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further council comments? Here, none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Goddard?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Great, good luck.
Did you ask for system comments?
I did.
Is that beside?
That's okay. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 10, discuss take action on resolution number 956. Jim?
Resolution number 956, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, imposing an annual stormwater utility assessment for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, against all real property within the city limits of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, providing for classifications of property, providing for certification of annual stormwater utility assessment role, providing an effective date. So reading a resolution number 956.
Thank you.
To adopt resolution number 956.
Second.
I have a motion by councilman Goddard, second by vice mayor Montanaro. Discussion from council? At this time, open up agenda item 10 for public comment.
Gail Abrams, resident of the CRA. Is there a cap in the future on raising stormwater, or could it be the sky's the limit?
Under my understanding, it is at the cap now at 10%, correct? Isn't the cap at 10?
There is no cap on stormwater utility fees. It's a fee.
So there is no cap. So if you, like, say, three years from now, you want to raise it to $208 a year, you could do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Floor is still open for public comment? Here, none, back to council. Further council comments? Here, none. Lenore?
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Goddard?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 11, discuss take action on resolution 957.
I think we should postpone this, so we can make it match the other issues that we talked about.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 12, city council proposed a regular meeting, agenda items, I think that needs to be changed to the 20th, and as we always say, whatever is not on that someone would like to see on here, please get with their city manager. Moving on to agenda item 13, appointments to boards.
Move to reappoint Bill Meyer to, as a primary member of the firefighters and police pension plan board of trustees.
Second. I have a motion by councilman Goddard, second by, who's it, vice mayor Montanaro. Further discussion?
Yeah, I want to note that this particular pension plan board has, currently has six members, and Florida statute dictates that there shall be five, and so there's one extra police officer on here, according to the statute.
Okay.
So we need to make that adjustment.
Staff will look into that and come back at the next meeting if something.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for looking at that. Any further discussion? Lenore?
There's only five members on the police and fire?
Yes.
Five members.
Five.
And you're saying statute said they have to have six?
No.
No, they said there's six.
There are six. The statute says that you need five.
I'm only saying five.
On police and fire?
Yes.
You have Dragon, Frost, Mayor, Minch, Pollak, Spiegelhalter, there's six.
Yeah, there's six. Dragon, Frost, Mayor, Minch, Pollak, and Spiegelhalter. So there's six people on that board.
Will you take a look at it and bring it back next time? Okay. Well, we'll bring it back, we'll bring it to vote.
There's only five on the board roster.
Okay, well, there's five shown on this table, so we'll, yeah, we need to take it shown on the table, so.
Frost is no longer on it. That's what the change is. Frost is no longer on.
Some are grayed out, because they're no longer.
If you look at, there are five on there. Darren Frost is no longer on. Rob Bench took his place.
Okay, so we need to take that out of the table. So that was our statement.
There are five. There are five on there.
So we apologize for the confusion.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have a question. We also have a vacancy for a primary trustee on the general employees pension plan board, and I was wondering why we haven't filled that.
Do we have any applications? Okay.
I'll talk about it at staff meeting.
Okay, great. Any recreation board, two primary? Maybe want to look at that, too. Everything else is basically all of minutes. Okay, any further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion carried. Going on to agenda item 14, approval of minutes.
Before you do that, Lenore, I made that last motion.
Let me recorrect it.
Give me a second.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Goddard?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, thank you. All set. Moving on to agenda item 14.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 15, the July 15, 2015 meeting as submitted.
Second.